Here, we'll call the July 17th, 2014 Plan Commission Meeting to Order.
We'll call the roll. Ezit, Green, Hamilton, Lamott, Gonzalez, Parber. Here. Ketchum is absent. And Vice Chair Caroline.
Here.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone present in the public who would like to make any comments about any items that aren't on the agenda? Okay, so I guess now we would move on to the consent item. So, anyone have any questions, concerns? Okay. So, I guess at this point we make a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the consent items, which include tonight just a 1-5-6 Cascade Drive, Application Number 1311.
I'll move the second, or second rather.
Okay.
Oh, maybe before you vote, we should just make sure there's no one in the audience to speak to that item? No.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there is a 10-day appeal period for any interested party? Okay, so the next item is 420 Scenic Road.
Okay, the applicant's applying for an encroachment permit in a fence height variance to legalize and complete a fence hedged tree landscaping project started along his property frontage. Measurements in the field taken by staff revealed that the paved portion of scenic road that runs along the property frontage is very narrow and is only 11.5 feet in width at some points. Prior to the fence being constructed, vehicles sometimes parked along the shoulder of the road, which narrowed the road below the minimum 12-foot width that the fire trucks need to access houses further along scenic road. The rock wall below the roadbed was also built to retain the hillside above the house, but not engineered to support vehicular parking. Parking in this area could potentially damage the rock wall and threaten the house and the public roadway stability. The house is also set below the roadway so that upstairs windows are at almost the same level as the roadbed, just 10 to 12 feet from the vehicular pathway at a significant bend in scenic road. This results in headlights of vehicles traveling north and south on scenic shining directly into the upstairs bedroom window of the residence. The Ross Valley Fire Department has reviewed the situation, the plans, and went out to the site and determined that the fence location will not impact their ability to utilize the roadway. They also indicated that the fence will eliminate the potential for vehicles to park along the very narrow stretch of road. That has been a problem in the past, narrowing it below the 12 feet required for emergency access. Therefore, we're recommending that you approve Application 14-25 based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. And you also have an email that we received today in support of the project from a neighbor. That would conclude our report.
Okay, doesn't anyone, commissioners have questions of staff?
I noticed that one of the conditions was that they keep the hedge to a six-foot height. Is there a specific reason for that, or does it have to do with the fence height requirements there?
Well, I think I discussed it with the applicant, and he thought he could live with the six feet, right? Originally, it was five feet, and so six feet is the maximum our code allows, but you can always request an exception. So, I mean, if you wanted to go higher. Let me see how we noticed it.
Was there something in there that pertained to the privacy? Because it mentioned that the elevation of the house fronts the street and...
Yeah, and I think six feet will block the headlights. That was my main concern. But, I mean, if the applicant really feels he needs higher, but I don't think you do, right?
I'm not that old. I think one of the biggest problems that is not here is my water. It's getting over, you know, unless it's going to park cars. I might say, yeah, it's driving on there.
Yeah, the applicant's intention, he didn't want to create a solid. He wanted to have some trees where there's still a view through, so...
Okay, is red curbing a good idea to, you know, I'm looking at the pictures.
Yeah, there's no curb there, so we'd have to install a curb in order to paint it red.
Okay, so, and like the picture with this wire fence, is that the same line that the proposed fence will be on?
Yes.
So, it's not going to be actually closer to the roadway?
It's closer than the fence that was there before, but it leaves enough room for the fire trucks.
Well, my concern is that the report from the Fire Department says something about cars being parked along there sometimes, and that this fence will eliminate the possibility of the cars being parked there, so...
And that's what the Fire Department would like? They don't want...
No, I understand they'd like it. We all probably would like it, I think. But the idea is, what's to prevent someone from trying to park a car there, even though the fence...
They'll get a ticket.
They'll get a ticket.
Because they're narrowing the road below 12 feet.
I see. Okay, thank you. Well, is there a placard to be placed out there to say that? I mean, some...
You know, someone came in today asking about that, because he has friends that come and visit that don't know about the 12-foot clearance rule, but then someone else I talked to said that's standard all throughout Maroon that you have to leave 12 feet. So, I mean, I guess you might have, once in a while, a guest come that isn't aware of that 12-foot clearance regulation that might end up getting a ticket.
That's why I mentioned the red curbing.
Yeah, I would have to talk to the police. I kind of thought that they first issued a warning. You know, if they see a vehicle in the location and it's not a...
My parking meter's halfway up there, and running right up to the apartment on the other side. Or a tree, two trees on either end.
So, someone was asking if we could post those signs throughout town, and I mean, it would be a good idea, but I told him he'd have to go to the council. They'd have to budget for signs and determine where they would go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that would help, would it, if you just put a no parking sign? Yeah. Okay. You know, at one point, we went through and we painted the areas where you could park that allowed, that left the 12 feet of clearance. So, there's some neighborhoods where they're marked, the on-street spaces. I don't think this is one of them, though, right? Yeah, so...
Another question I had of staff is, do we want to put the indemnity clause in the revocable encroachment permit?
Good idea. Yeah, we'll do that. We'll add it.
The long one we've been using.
Right.
Thanks.
I'll do that.
Okay, Esther?
I just had a quick question. The 12-foot distance is to the fence, is that correct?
Yeah.
The dimension, the width, is to the fence?
Yeah, I basically ran the fence. There's a tree on one end, I mean, an oak tree on one end, an oak tree on the other, and a water meter in between, I mean, dead center.
Okay.
And the fence, I know, inside of the oak tree, and inside of the water meter.
Okay. Can you tell or approximate what the distance from the fence to the edge of the asphalt is? I'm looking at...
I put it down, I think I wrote it down.
It varies, right? I'm looking at picture one, photograph one?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just trying to get a sense of scale.
Let me see if I have it. I thought I wrote it on the map. It varies about 16 feet.
I think I saw something. There's a note that says fence varies 13 to 15 road width, so is that, can I interpret that to...
It's about, as a small square, 12'6", that I have on here, and that's to the water meter. So, it's actually behind the water meter, so it'd be about 13 feet.
Okay. So, that looks like it's maybe two feet?
Yeah, if you look at the, this map here, you'll see an oak tree at the very end, and an oak tree at the very top. You see the water meter in the middle. And where the water meter says 12'6", to the water meter is probably the narrow spot. I use the oak tree that's on the boundary.
We have a estimate that it varies.
Yeah.
We have a measure, inches there.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of what this width is here.
Well, in this area, this is a six-foot post, so it's less than six feet.
Yeah, it's like two feet.
And here, the asphalt's really close to the post, so it varies.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Shelley or Shelby, getting you?
Would the applicant, would you like to come up and say anything else? Yeah, why don't you come over here, because we may have some questions for you, and it'll be easier if you're there.
There you go. Yeah, I'm actually, I want to keep my whole thing with, I'd like to see the fence disappear, to be honest with you, in the future, once it gets a little hedged, because I don't like the fence either. But I got to, for deer, right now, I have to have it up there, more for that than, and I have a dog. Just having a green boundary is kind of nice.
Yeah. Do you have an irrigation system? Are you going to be putting this on automatic irrigation drip line?
Yeah, he's, he'll put that, he's intact, all of, he's doing the trees and the irrigation, the drip irrigation.
Anyone else?
No, I think my comment is just that I like the idea of it going in place. It is kind of a safety hazard, as was commented, that there are some areas in which people are parking, and it's causing some instability, and so by putting this up, it's helping in public safety.
Are we commenting? Yeah, no, I was just going to say that I think, overall, it adds a lot of safety, and I think the fence is okay, too, just in terms of imposing on the landscape, I think it's fine.
Yeah, the big, a lot of the neighbors were real happy to see trees, and it morning and night.
Okay, so I guess at this point, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll take it for consideration. Oh, I'm sorry, does anyone here from the public want to speak to this item at all? Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, worthwhile, and it's just a matter of putting the paperwork in place for the encroachment permit and moving ahead. I'm okay with it.
I'm kind of ready to make a motion to approve the permit. Okay, I'll make a motion. We'll do it. I'll make a motion to approve Application Number 14-25 involving 420 Scenic Road, as suggested amendments to include the indemnity clause.
Good the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? So, motion carries, and there is a 10-day appeal period, though. Thank you. Okay, so the next item are the minutes from the May 15th, 2014 meeting, May 29th meeting, and June 19th meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or comments on those?
Linda, I have an addition on page five of the G, what was this, the May 29th meeting? On page five, with respect to the comments that I made, I believe it was during this part of the meeting, although I don't remember exactly if it was at that point, but since there's only two notes about my comments, it probably was. I, there were two things that I had done, which was to talk about where the issues, which document the issues were located in. So specifying, you know, issues, and I kind of held up a town code, and I held up a general plan, and I held up the ordinance. So, I think somewhere in here, there was, I think it was right in here, it was, I think it was after my, where it says she noted that the Affordable Housing Committee members, Open Space Committee members, and the Planning Commissioners were all residents and volunteered their time. I could just go at the end of that, and I said, oh, yeah, actually, it does go at the end of that. It said Commissioner Hamilton discussed the confusion that seemed to have occurred and the need for public workshops to make sure residents understood the issues. I think that was when I also made comments that, about the confusion also stemming from the public not understanding the distinction between what of the issues resided, past tense, resided, whatever, were in? Which of the issues were actually located in the housing element itself, and which of the issues were located in our town code, and which of the issues were located in our ordinance? And that it was very important to understand that distinction so that one was not being confused with the other, when people talked generally about errors or mistakes or problems, because that, knowing where they were, had a lot to do with what you then do about fixing them. I also made a comment at that time about the distinction between hearing and listening public comment and agreeing with public comment, and that while we might not agree with everything people say, it does not mean that they haven't been heard. I know that was a lot, usually we're much shorter. Oh, yes, the audio and the video. Thank you. Which, again, you know, somewhat, these notes with all of that, wonderful new technology, but it's a quick reference, so thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments, corrections?
I have an overall comment that I actually watched the May 29th hearing. That was one I wasn't here for, and I want to thank my fellow commissioners for being so articulate and so expressive at that. And I was really, I'm proud to be a part of the body. Thank you.
Okay, so Linda, I guess, do we divide them up and vote on, okay, so on the, I wasn't present for May 15th, but it looks like we have a quorum with the members that were there, so someone...
I will make a motion to approve the Thursday, May 15th minutes from our commission meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I wasn't there at that one, so I'm not going to abstain on that one. Okay, so next is May 29. Okay. Anyone like to make a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 29th minutes with the additional notes from Commissioner Hamilton on the distinctions between the general plan, the code, and the ordinance discussion. That was an important point. So, I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then we have June 19th. Anyone? Do we have any corrections to that, or that one was fine?
Motion to approve the minutes of June 19th.
Someone said...
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next item is a discussion item with the list of items that we've been keeping, that we think might need updating, or, and Linda has distributed a list I asked, I asked her to create a list so that we'd have something to...
And Commissioner Green has asked that I include the section numbers, so, you know, that they pertain to, so that when you're looking at them, you can flip to the code pretty quickly. So, but do look at it, because I may have forgotten some, missed some.
And we only have 30 days to reenact all these, no. Is there a time limit? Do you have a time limit for us?
No, I don't, because I think, depending upon what the council decides to do, we're going to be pretty busy doing urgency ordinances, and this probably will take a backseat to some other changes that have to happen first.
I was just going to encourage the commission members who did not watch or attend last night's council meeting to do so, and then also to look on the town's website. If you go in the archive, the meeting archives, took me a while to find it. If you go in the meeting archives, and there is a supplemental packet of information attached to item number eight. So, if you look at item number eight, and, in fact, I was just looking, if you go to item number eight, it's hard to find, so I want to just tell you exactly where it is. Yeah, so if you go to item number eight, right underneath the description of it, there's a link that says supplemental packet information, and it itemizes the town staff's recommended actions for remediating all of the issues associated with the housing element and ordinance 778. And it looks like from that list that we have at least two items that will be coming to us in August. And then, so there'll be two items coming to us in August. A recommendation of approval for the ARADA, and a recommendation for approval to pull the Jehovah's Witness site out of the map, PDD, and leave it as it is currently. And then, the rest of them will come to us in bits and pieces, but there are lots of bits and pieces, so. It looks as though we will be spending our time, not so much on these things, for the next foreseeable future, and quite a bit more time on those things.
I actually did earlier today print up, so if you could confirm, is this the list you were interested, so? I was thinking it might be helpful, though, some of these items might be part of ones that come forward, but maybe we might want to prioritize what we think would be of higher importance than other items to work on. The list, yeah, the kind of what, I don't know what we want to call it, our action list?
It says proposed actions at the top, and it's attached to the July 16th.
No, she's talking about this one. I'm not talking about that one. I'm talking about our little action list we think...
Oh, yeah, our zoning list, rather.
Before I forget, I think we should do that, but I had another couple of questions about how zoning revisions to our town code and stuff come before us, come before the town council, so what, the process for that, but we can go through the prioritization first, but then remind me I had those questions.
I was just wondering, there was something else that you guys prioritized, and the way you did it is you did them individually and sent your list to Jim, and then Jim used your, all your different, to come up with a prioritized list. I don't know if you want to do it that way, or if you want to try to do it here tonight.
Well, let's just look at this really quickly, maybe, and we can see which of these items...
Or maybe there's something that just pop out at you, that you say, we definitely want these first. Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Well, part of the, let me just say, part of the list, on my list, I added number 16, ordinances that cause a lot of hearings on common topics, whether they should be amended. I have a vague feeling what some of those are, but I think that could be moved up in priority, because that would then make certain permits, perhaps in the near future, easier to obtain, which is a goal of the general plan. So, that would be my suggestion.
It seems that there's a number of items on here related to parking, covered parking, tandem parking, side setback parking. So, there's a number of parking things, and it seems like they could all be grouped together. And I might add, maybe prioritize.
I've identified a lot of projects that come in that may not really be the actual public plan.
The other group that I see has to do with 50% remodel or significant remodel issues. We see that a lot, and how we can either choose to or not choose to true up our code's definition of 50% remodel with the Fire Department.
I meant there, and I'm not sure how it happened, that when you guys originally reviewed that, I thought everybody wanted to use the same language that they used, which is significant remodel, not 50%. Yeah, so that was...
That's my memory as well.
Yeah. So, it wasn't, our definition is pretty close to theirs now, but what you guys added in is you added in, or if someone's adding a bedroom. Because their 50% remodel rule doesn't always allow us to look at the parking, and when people add bedrooms in the hillsides, you were feeling that they really should revisit their parking and see if there was a way for them to add more if they were adding a bedroom. So, that's really the only way ours differs, except that we call it 50% remodel, which for some reason makes people want to argue about what's 50%. It seems like when you call it significant remodel, there's less arguing about it, you know? I don't know why that is.
And so ours, I thought ours differed also in the measurement of square feet versus measurement of linear footage of walls, those kinds of things.
What we heard, ours is identical to the Fire Department, but what we heard is that the Fire Department, in some cases, uses a linear wall measurement, in some cases. I don't know why they do that, and I've never found it in their code, so I don't know if it's if people complain a lot. You know, sometimes people will just be taking, like, they'll have a room with a square door, and they'll want to put an arch door, and based on the way our code is written, that can make you end up having to count half the lower floor if the two rooms are connected. So, I think the Fire Department has some other way they do it, you know, if you're really not affecting, you know, the floor plan or anything. But I don't, we can look at that and see if I can get something out of them describing their linear method.
Legally, it's going to differ somewhat if we say 50% remodel versus significant, because significant is grayer, and to a court, it would mean, you know, were they right or weren't they, was this significant? They'd have to go back and reanalyze it almost every time, whereas we say... They'd have to go back and reanalyze it almost every time, whereas we say 50%.
I think she was saying that the title, it's just the title, there's a whole bunch of language that tells you exactly how to apply it.
Okay.
In that the title is somewhat inconsistent, perhaps, or inaccurate with the actual text in the body of it. So we should look at both the text, as well as the title, to make sure that they...
Yeah, I agree, we want it consistent. But we wouldn't want to go back and say, you know, the ordinance should say significant remodel, it should stick with 50% for sure, I think.
In terms of green building and required solar, my knee-jerk reaction would be to move those down on the list, partly because there's going to be state mandates and state initiatives coming down, and so we're going to want to be in line with that. We also don't, I guess my opinion is not to do things that make it cost prohibitive to do business, but to encourage green practices. And again, I think there's a lot of things that are coming down at the state, and that may be best to put on the back burner for a little bit.
On the other side of that, I think that the item that says revisit residential second unit ordinance, it might be timely to kind of move that one up, so that we can begin to look at ways to make the second units a little bit more manageable, doable, so.
Yeah, I would agree.
Encouraging the housing that we already have to come forward, or to create housing that is smaller in size and diversified housing stock. So I think that that's an important one to come up as we talk more about housing.
All right, so I'm just going to chime in on that, sort of looking at point number 13, is, again, thinking of rezoning, mixed uses, that are there other things that currently aren't in the general plan, that areas that, as we get into zoning ordinances, are there other areas in which we'd want to change the uses to allow for more future types of residential retail space?
A couple of items that I would like to add to the list, I know we have a few applications where it was the story floor issue needed to maybe be, on the slope, needed to be maybe defined a little clearer. And another item was, I was, I think I sent a message to Linda after a hearing once, because I wasn't clear on what the story pole requirements were, and I think that might be tied into the 50% significant remodel discussion.
The other two that are not on here, which will eventually lead me around to my question about how ordinance revisions get on agendas, are the noise ordinance, which was on the town council's agenda for last night, they didn't get to it, and the sign ordinance, and suggested amendments to the non-commercial sign ordinance, again, not on our list, but was on the town council agenda. So we should add those, and I assume that if they go to the town council, then the town council drops them back down to us, and then we push it back up to them, or what goes on with that?
Ordinances can come to you three different ways. An applicant can request one, the council can direct you to consider one, you can request one. You only review changes to the zoning ordinance. So town code changes don't have to be sent to you, they can send them to you as a courtesy, which they sometimes do, but things like, you know, the police section of the code, they don't send any, they don't have to send those to you. Health and sign, the sign ordinance is in the zoning ordinance, so it would have to come to you. Second unit ordinance is in the zoning ordinance, it has to come to you. So that's basically... Noise is not in the zoning ordinance, it's in health and safety, so...
But we hear plenty of complaints about noise.
Sure do, don't you?
So maybe it should be noted that, noted to the town council that as noise ordinance comes forward as a courtesy, we wouldn't mind having a discussion about it on this level.
The town attorney has looked at our noise ordinance and really isn't happy with it, so it really needs to just be completely redone, but other things have reared their heads, so...
So that somewhat begs the question, how in alignment is our town code noise ordinance with our noise element? Do we know?
My understanding is it isn't, because it has, it sets decibel levels that don't even exist out there now, they're too low. Traffic driving by is louder than what's allowed.
And so essentially, we have a general plan with a noise element to it, that has different, that has established different norms, if you will, because it's fairly up to date, and that that noise element in our general plan would direct the revision to our town code, correct?
You'd think. But you've got a lot of different neighborhoods that I don't think care what the general plan says, and want the noise decibel levels to stay the way they are. So you've got, you know, a commercial space right in the middle of all the residential zones that keeps saying, "Your general plan says it's noisier out there now," and I'm getting picked on because, you know, I'm above the noise level. Well, your streets are making it noisier, so it's going to be interesting to see how it, they don't always do what they should.
So we have a situation where some people are looking at the current town code decibels, and using that to argue something, and other people are using the general plan, and using that to argue a different thing, and it's a difficult situation because they're in conflict with each other.
Which is why we want a town code in compliance with our general plan.
Basically, the council has told that neighborhood that we are not going to, there's a section in the noise ordinance that allows the police chief to lower the decibel level by five decibels, and lower the maximum, and start citing people. And the council has said, "We are not going to do that, we're not going to direct our police chief to use that section of the noise ordinance."
All right, so here's just my one comment still on the general plan. The general plan is a guiding document, and it's not necessarily meant to be static, and it doesn't necessarily represent what's on the ground right now. So the two can be out of compliance, if, I don't think I really want to use that term, but they may not be in sync, because this is where we want to go, and town code is here, and it needs to be changed accordingly to get us where we need to go in the future. And so we're going to prioritize things that need to be addressed right now, but there is going to be that lag, there's sort of always, and some elements are going to be a lag, because once you catch up, now there's a new general plan with a new vision in the future.
Well, and what it does bring to mind is if we are looking at this list of ordinances to change, we need to, you know, we need to always look at the town, the general plan as the guidepost to it, to get us there, and, having said that, if for some reason, I mean, I guess then the question could come up, well, what if we or somebody doesn't want us to go there, for whatever reason, and wants to create it differently, then you have to go first and amend the general plan, and then go back and do the ordinance, you shouldn't do the change to the town code first.
Well, yeah, I agree with what you're saying, but to make it, my analogy is to the Constitution of the United States, which has been amended a whole bunch of times, right? And because, because sometimes it doesn't work the way they wrote it in 1778, okay? So, and then there's lots of federal laws and regulations that are based on the Constitution, and they come and go quickly, more or less, Congress does or doesn't do their job, and they come and go. That's sort of the similar scheme here. And so the general plan is not cast in stone, it is flexible, apparently we can amend it legally four times a year, and the ordinances, which are sort of a magnification of bits and pieces of the general plan, if the general plan just isn't working for some ordinance that we are trying to pass, then we might recommend an amendment to the general plan, so the ordinance can work. So it's pretty flexible, I think.
It's when it gets drafted differently to come to you.
Any other comments?
I have a question about the amnesty program for non-legal units. Is that, is that in one of these, nested in one of these?
We have the ordinance update, but the amnesty is something that, boy, I thought was going to have happened by now, so it can't hurt to add that. That should really be, that, we had meant to get that in place a while ago.
Okay, yeah, I think that's pretty important.
Well, actually, that is right, it is important, for sure, because we grant it quite a bit, and it's part of, I think, number 16 also. That's maybe one of those ordinances that cause a lot of hearings. So, yeah, amnesty should, you know, we're going to end up with the whole list on top again, and with the priority of zoning.
Maybe then, one other thing in terms of us prioritizing and grouping all of these things, would be to fold in the list, and I'm pointing over here, the list that was created by staff with respect to the ordinance into this, into this list, ordinance 778, with respect to both housing element amendments and ordinance amendments, as they're going to be related. So, I mean, ultimately, I would envision that we would take this list, cluster them, prioritize them, and stick them on a timeline. An internal work plan, yeah. Long one.
Well, you know, just regarding that comment, I personally think that we, if we did that, we'd want to put it on top. The proposed actions from the July 16 hearing should go above, because they're state mandated, and so we have that. I mean, I wouldn't meld them in, I wouldn't sort of have a topic and then put one of the proposed actions in that topic, I would like to see them.
And I haven't seen that list, so...
The only, the only reason...
I was under the impression that that list was something that the council was going to be dealing with, no?
Well, a lot of it's going to be coming to us, because it's, because it's amendments to the housing, any amendments to the housing element are supposed to come through us first to make a recommendation to go back to them. Some of these things are so perfunctory, if you will, like the errata stuff, they want to do it by an amendment, so it's going to come to us, we're going to recommend...
But I mean, do you want that in your list? It seems like that's on its own time course.
The only reason that I was bringing it up is some of them are fast, and some of them are slow.
So some of the slower items we might...
There are some things that we may not see for, I don't know how long, because they include, you know, have a town forum about school street. So unless they're going to have town forums every other week, or something like that, I imagine that some of those, some of those things on that list are going to take longer than others.
So what we'll do is, we'll take a look at that list, and take a look at combining them, Jim and I, and then you guys can change it, or add to it. We'll put that on the next agenda. You know, your next agenda might not be the best one, because I think it's going to be a long meeting. You have like six private projects, and then you've got the changes that you described, and then an urgency moratorium, I guess that just goes to the council, though, right? Yeah.
August meeting?
It is August 21st.
The other, the other point that we might consider is not too long, well, it was longer ago now than it was, I think, we were meeting on a, every other week basis, and/or special meeting type of basis, and we may or may not need to consider that kind of schedule, given, given what's going on right now, and given the need to continue being supportive of moving forward. So whatever, I would like to recommend that whatever we can do to support that process of keeping that whole thing moving forward, that we might consider doing every other week or special meetings.
Did you want to agendize that for a future meeting? Jim's not going to be here in August, so Jim, Jim's out of town for your 21st meeting. It's just going to be me and Garrett.
When does he, when does he leave if we were going to have us, I mean, I know that this has all happened rapidly as of last night.
We've got a council meeting August 6th.
We actually have a council meeting next week.
I know. I'm talking about the regular one, though, isn't that on the 6th?
August 6th, and then ours was supposed to be?
Yours is 21st.
August 21st.
I don't, if you guys want to try to fit in another meeting in August, that's fine, but I'll have to run it by him to make sure he's available, because he might not be available.
What if we just direct staff to check in with the planning director, and see what his, he'll have a better sense of the whole timeline of what's going to need to happen with, with whatever happens with the council, so to maybe check in with him?
Well, we had a meeting today, and Garrett and Jim told me that the stuff that the council's going to be sending to you is going to be sent to you at your August 21st meeting, so.
If we can move some of those private projects forward to an earlier meeting, because we can't really deal with the things coming from the town council earlier than the 21st.
Right.
But if we wanted to lighten the load on that agenda, and have an earlier meeting, would that make sense?
I, you know, I have to look at the noticing, and notice has to go out 10 days ahead of time for private projects, I've got some people that are straggling things to me, they were under the impression they were going to be heard on the 21st, I don't know if they could be ready earlier. So I can, if you think you need another meeting, Garrett seemed to think that everything could get done on August 21st. So I don't think you, I don't think you have to lock yourself into trying to get a second meeting in August. What I was saying is, if you wanted to make that a regular schedule, we could put it for discussion at your September meeting, that's when Jim will be here, if you guys want to start trying to meet twice a month.
Let's just get, let's just get the planning director's recommendation on timing after August 21st, because if you look at what's likely to come to us on August 21st, it's too fairly simple.
I'll let him know that the commission's open to meeting more often till we get through this busy patch, right, and then let him look into what dates might work.
Okay, anything else? So I guess the next item is adjourned.
Any idea on the signal timing issue along Sir Francis Street?
We'll just give you an honest no, I don't know. Sorry.
Just a question, do, does anybody remember what the, what, who in San Anselmo is overseeing that, if we wanted?
It's the Public Works Director.
It's the Public Works Director.
Right.
And so, there might be some information archived on their website, if they've had conversations about it, maybe?
I thought he, I thought they got grant money to try to do some kind of a study on how to figure out how to make it better, so, boy, it seems like it's been a while since I first heard that, maybe the study's been done, I don't know. Is it? Okay. It really is dysfunctional.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
I will second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.